I agree with you. I just want to kind of know the meeting.
I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, November first, two thousand twenty-two. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dusty Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald?
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon?
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Kara Melton?
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul?
Here.
City manager Brian Caesar?
Here.
City attorney Ashley Smith?
Here.
The clerk is present. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. We are going to start with an invocation given by our city clerk, Rachel Hughes, and the pledge led by Commissioner McDonald. If you'll stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for the sun shining that you provided for us today. And we thank you because we are able to be here. That means that we are healthy, dear God. And dear Lord, we just ask that you will be with us today in the decisions that are going to be made that we will be honoring to you, dear Lord. And we just ask, dear God, that you will be with each and every one of us and our families. And we just thank you for the blessings that you give to us. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I mean the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rachel, for doing that. All right. I'm just going to stay right here. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, yeah. And I had the note on that, too. Okay, let's try that again. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Melton. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, now I'll try this. It's a light agenda tonight. Can you tell? I mean, like, we don't want to get out of here or anything, right? Oh, Brian's bedtime, I forgot. Okay, anyway, we'll work on that. All right, so I was asked a while back to consider doing a proclamation for extra mile day. I did a little research on it and I really liked the essence of what this was about. We have, and obviously, you know, I'm unapologetically biased a little bit, but we have a lot of nonprofits in our city that are working really hard to pick up the slack and do things that, you know, sometimes legally our city can't do, or for whatever reason they can't do that. And I don't know, and people, individuals, of course, that are also doing that. And I'm not sure that people are truly aware of how much it saves our city and how much more is getting done because of them. And so tonight I want to recognize those, not just those nonprofits, but those individuals that are going that extra mile. It really wanted me to pick somebody, but I couldn't do that because I think there's just, there's so many great citizens out there doing so much to make our community a better place. So I'm just going to read this proclamation. Whereas Almagordo is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Almagordo is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Almagordo is a community which chooses to shine a light on, shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas the city of Almagordo acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create five hundred extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November first, two thousand twenty-two. Now therefore, I, Susan L. Payne, Mayor of the City of Almagordo, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim November first, two thousand twenty-two, as Extra Mile Day in Almagordo and urge each individual of the community to take time on this day and every day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, and our world a better place. And I think we have to send that in. Is that right? Okay, so I'm just going to leave that there. Okay. We will move on to public comment. I don't have anybody signed up for public comment? Nope, okay, just want to be sure. And the city managers' report.
You don't have anyone signed up for that either. We had one last week and I'm claiming the half hour Josh owes me.
Okay. I'll let you two hash that one out. Okay. And remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Do we have anything?
I want to burn up that half hour that Brian wanted. No, I'm kidding.
I have something really quick. Brian, is there an update on the police retention issue we talked about a few weeks ago with potentially utilizing marijuana taxation for that?
That has been sent out to the entire commission. You want to get up and explain how that's being, you know that much better than I do on the three hundred thousand?
Yeah, I believe there was something sent out a few weeks ago, wasn't there? Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, so the, it's been a few weeks now. The marijuana money, as I call it, was supplemented with some, some funds from the city manager who was kind enough. And I was able to come up with a proposal for him and we managed to agree. So actually, we come up with an agreement. And my guys actually have already received their first retention portion for the, we're going to do it every quarter, basically. And so last pay period for the city was actually their first paycheck they got.
And we have some new police officers.
We're going to have a whole bunch in here next commission meeting. It's already on the agenda for presentation to have them sworn in.
That is really exciting. I think what we're doing is working, so super excited about that. Thank you.
For sure. Thanks.
So just to confirm, there's no next steps? Were we pretty much tackled at all?
Right, yes. It is already in effect for the officers. It's a sliding scale based on years of service. It is subject to approval every, every fiscal year and assuming that commission through the budget, budgetary process approves the, the amount of money that we'll be, be requesting because as, as the chief explained, excuse me, a portion of it, a large portion of it is the, the gross receipts taxes that we see from the sale of cannabis, but it is supplemented by general fund money. And on an annual basis, whoever's the chief will be presenting a plan to whoever's the city manager because, you know, we're foreseeing that this continues on past our time in the city. And it's approved on a, on an annual basis. It doesn't have to be used strictly as it's being used this year. It will change as times change and needs change.
Yep. I think we're good. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything?
I had the pleasure of being a judge for the Zubu costume contest stuff. And I just want to thank all the city staff that put that event on. It's amazing what they do to accommodate four thousand, you know, families, kids rolling through there and all the businesses that locally donate candy to make that happen. I mean, for a free event in town, I was honestly extremely surprised. It's been a number of years since I had gone to it, but it was a really cool event, so.
Yeah. I, our community services team, I can't even say enough about them. They do an amazing job every, every event. Every event is, and how they pull it off without too much trouble. I, I'm sure behind the scenes, we're probably not hearing about it, but for the most part, you wouldn't know it. I wa, I was, I went through there and I can't handle that many people, sorry. But anyway, they did it and it was pretty warm that day, too, actually, so.
Yeah, it was a nice day.
Considering all those things, they did an amazing job. It was, they definitely deserve kudos for that one, so, as always. And of course, we have some more events coming up as well. Is that all you had?
Yeah, that was it.
Okay, so this weekend is the Veterans Day Parade. If you guys get a chance, go out and support our veterans. And also, first thing in the morning, Gus Smacker. They brought Gus Smacker back, so that's pretty exciting. That will be, I think that starts at eight o'clock or something. Eight o'clock or? What is it?
Seven.
Seven?
Seven.
Okay, yeah, I know I'm supposed to be there really early in the morning, so.
I do, yes.
Yeah. So, anyway, yes, thank you for that. So Gus Smacker and then head on over to the Veterans Day Parade. And then Dudley School is also having a work day on Saturday, so I'm going to make it one of these days, I promise you. I just, it seemed like they always want the mayor on the weekends and I'm like, oh. So unfortunately, I'm going to be at Gus Smacker and then the Veterans Day Parade. And then also on Saturday, which is where I'm going after all that, is it's called the Day of Hope and it is an outreach for homeless or those on the verge of homelessness, homelessness. And I'll be set up on table with my other job there. And so, yeah, if you get a chance, come out and support that as well. There'll be a lot of different organizations out there providing resources and information. And, yeah, so, that, oh, and that's at Mountain View Church. I'm sorry, it's a Mountain View Church that is from.
Ten to two.
Ten to two, yes, ten to two, thank you. So I will be participating in the Veterans Day Parade and then I'm going to run over there with my, relieve my staff.
They're also offering free legal services at the courthouse?
Free legal services. They'll have a veterinarian out there. I know loving, we'll be giving out some blankets and some food bags and that kind of thing, pet food from Kitty City. And I think the public schools will be out there and, and so there's going to be a lot going on and that is just a great outreach to the, to the community and to get people connected with those resources that can help them. So that'll also be on Saturday. So a lot going on on Saturday. If anybody that says there's nothing to do in Almagordo is not paying attention, are they? So, anyway. With that, does anybody have anything else? No? Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I would like to pull an item off the consent agenda.
Okay.
That is going to be item three, ordinance sixteen sixty-one pertaining to licenses and business registrations.
Okay, are you, are you going to speak on that or are you just pulling it?
I'm, I'm pulling it so I can speak on it.
Okay.
Item four as well. Item four.
Okay, so. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item three and four?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner McDonald and a second from Commissioner Burnett. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, Kara Melton?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes. Seven zero. We're going to take that away from him if that happens again. No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. I know, he'll be thanking me for that, right? Okay. All right, so you said item three, you're just pulling that. Is that correct, Rachel?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, so we'll move on to.
She's going to speak on it, I think.
Are you going to speak on that? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear you. I apologize. All right, we'll move on to items pulled from the consent agenda, item three. And Rachel Hughes has some information on that?
Okay, so the reason I pulled the ordinance is because per state statute, licenses that are being denied or revoked must come before the commission. So if after the information comes to the city manager, which we had added that language of the potential denial or revocation of a license, then the city man, if the city manager agrees that it is not in the best interest of the public's welfare or safety or the violation of an ordinance has occurred, a hearing will be set forth of the applicant or the business owner to come before the commission and then they can present in front of the commission. So this only applies to the licenses and not the business registrations. Therefore, I will also have to bring back the alcoholic beverage dispensers chapter that was just passed at the last one. I apologize because it's going to have the exact same wording.
Okay. Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item three?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hang on. The city manager has something.
Oh, sorry.
Don't you need to make the motion with Rachel's addition? With her amendment?
Oh, I didn't say that. I just want to get out of here, all right? Jeez, man. All right, let's try this again. Do I have a motion to approve item three with Rachel's amendment?
So moved.
Okay, a motion from Commissioner Reardon, thank you for that, by the way. And a second from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kara Melton?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We will move on to item four, consider and act upon the adoption of final publication of ordinance sixteen sixty-two pertaining to code of conduct and Commissioner Reardon.
Just going to bring it up one last time before we final publicize it, but in section Q, I brought it up last time, I think that word collectively needs to be either removed or further defined. And it's not so much this commission and this upper management that we have now, it's for future commissions.
Okay, tell me where we're at, I'm sorry.
Section Q.
Page fifty.
Yeah, we don't have page numbers on ours, I don't think.
Yeah. Let me see if I can jump to it faster.
Item, paragraph Q.
Okay.
I just, from past experiences, like I mentioned, I had a conversation with the city manager about this last week or earlier this week, I don't remember when it was. You know, right now, we all kind of have an understanding of how it all works and we've got pretty good upper management, but I've been there when we haven't had decent management or, you know, or when the commission has had to step in behind the scenes and kind of recommend or urge something that needs to be done. And I think it either needs to be further defined or removed, just collectively. Individually, I understand in there.
I would tend to agree. I think we're tying our hands. No one can predict.
It's not so much.
It's going to be happening in the future.
Yeah, it's not so much present time with who we have here now and that, but for future commissions and city managers.
I guess the only issue I have is it, I, I see what you're saying, except that it does say delegated city manager, including administration of the personnel system. We don't have any oversight of personnel other than the city manager himself or herself. So, and that's not going to change with the new city manager. That's not, we're not, our govern, our, our. Our form of government is not set up that way.
I've been here when we haven't had a city manager. I've been here where the commission kind of had to run things behind the scenes because we didn't have anybody here to do it. So, but I'm just pointing it out there.
This does just apply to the, this does, this does just apply to the city manager and I'm, I'm fine with whatever change you want, y'all want to make. Just remember that this is also in the charter and you have a charter review committee coming up, so regardless of whether this is in the ordinance or changed.
We actually looked at it and the charter doesn't specifically say we can't. It just says that we'll delegate it to you. It doesn't say we cannot.
Right, and what this is saying is individually or collectively, commission is not going to go to whoever's in the city manager position and say, the chief of police, you need to fire him or, that's why I picked him. Or you're out of here. Doesn't, doesn't prevent one of you or all of you, for that matter, for saying, hey, we have some serious concerns because Richie is the way he is.
Yeah, and let's face it, that's also been done in the past, so.
That being said, change it as, as y'all see fit.
I just, either, either remove it collectively or further define it is, is all I'm kind of saying. And it's like I say, it's not us and you, it's, I've been here through some pretty bad city managers that, and one of them happened to be an attorney, so he would take that and probably run with it. He was an attorney out of Oklahoma and.
So.
He would manipulate every little aspect of, of how this was written.
Okay, so are you saying that?
The charter's a little more broad than, than this statement is. The charter's, when you read through there, it's, it's a little bit more of a broad statement.
Right.
So there's a little more room for interpretation where this one's pretty, you know.
But our, our form of government as a rule does not.
That's fine. We can pass it however y'all want to pass it. I'm just bringing it up, so.
I get what you're saying, I just.
First time, I'm going to be the one that says I told you so.
I, I mean, I don't think it's going to happen in the next three years, so.
Never know.
Yeah, I don't think so.
What are you wishing on us? What's that? Say, what are you wishing on us?
Yeah, you never know, you know? I mean, just thought I'd bring it up. I don't want the meeting to drag out too awful late tonight, so.
Okay, well, we can take a vote and decide. Is that all?
That's all I had.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve item four, adoption of final publication of ordinance sixteen sixty-two?
I'll make a motion to approve it with removing the word collectively.
Okay, that's what you want to do?
That's what I want to do, but it's up to you guys as well, so.
I'll second.
Okay, wait, I'm, okay, I want to be clear on this. So you want a motion, because I think Commissioner McDonald's confused also.
Well, I, I was just wondering, since you wanted to add meaning to the word collectively, can't we just get an example in there and refer it back to that as opposed to changing it completely?
Well, we're just either removing the word collectively or put a definition, further define it in there.
And, and that's why I'm asking. I said, if you're wanting to put a definition to it, let's go ahead and.
I feel like if we try to define it, it's going to violate the Open Meetings Act. If we say, oh, we need four commissioners or something, that's, we're just asking for trouble.
Well, I think.
Unless this takes place in a commission meeting, but outside of it.
I think the only thing I'm, when he said examples, he has an example, so can't we just refer to an example? I said, so whether it's, you know, because you're saying define it, but you, you're pointing back to a specific example.
There was numerous of those by, I mean, I'm just, you know, Brian was here, he remembers some of those, you know.
So when you're saying, when you're saying collectively, and again, take out the word, leave the word in, define the word. As you, as you do it collectively?
Yes.
Then you're either doing it in an open meeting or you're doing it in an executive session. That's really the only collective way that you can do that. You can't.
Yes.
You can't get together as a group and come visit the city manager and say, hey, we really want you to take care of that Richie problem.
Okay, so my question is, you're saying you don't like the word collectively?
Well, it, it.
Okay, but when I, I guess what I'm asking is, so the governing bodies shall not perform collectively or individually general executive management functions in the administration of city government.
I've been here where there was times where we had to do that because of the fact that we didn't have.
Collectively?
They were kind of behind the scenes running it because we didn't have any upper level staff at that time.
But if we, if we do that behind the scenes collectively, are we not violating the Open Meetings Act?
To a point. I mean, you, basically, we would have.
Violating it up to a point and you violating it.
Well, we would have the city manager, whoever we had in the position at the time, I think it was the city attorney at the time that was running things because we didn't have.
So for, for the, this applies, as it does in the charter, to the city manager, not, you, you fired me and you put Richie in my place. He is not, he would not be the city manager. He could be the acting city manager until such time as he becomes city manager.
So because you're saying we didn't have a city manager, we didn't have an assistant city manager. city manager, you're saying we didn't have any of that?
We had an attorney here, I don't remember.
You talking about Becky Ayler?
No.
I've been here for a long time, which.
No, it was, it was in the Suzie era.
Then it had to be Stephen Thies.
So Stephen was around, but I believe Stephen was running things for a short period of time.
He was, he was not the one that was acting, so we had Matt McNeil that was acting.
It would have been Matt then.
We had a chief of police that was acting at one point, we had contract city managers.
I mean, if it was Matt McNeil, he was an assistant city manager, so he.
But we had a police chief running things at one time, we've had, you know, so.
Which would take a greater level of oversight by the.
By the commission, and that's what I mean by that, we weren't really running anything, but the commission as a whole was having to, like the city manager stated, oversight to make sure that everything was going smoothly.
But that's not general executive management functions then?
It's a vague term, anyone can make the case.
Yeah, so, like I say, guys, I don't care one way or the other, I just was going to bring it up.
For you all to do it collectively, you have to do it in an open meeting or an executive session and there's only certain things that can be discussed in an executive session, so for the most part.
Because if we don't do it in an open meeting, we're violating the Open Meetings Act.
Executive session.
That's just really what it boils down to. There's no way that the commission legally, collectively can perform general management functions behind the scenes.
Behind the meeting, that's correct.
Right?
Yes.
I think we all agree on that, there's no way that that can happen legally.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thought I'd bring it up.
So what is your motion?
I already made it, passed the, let's see, what is it, ordinance 1662, removing the word collectively from section Q. And everything else, I don't have a problem with.
All right, I have a motion to approve item four, removing, with the removal of the word collectively.
From section Q.
From section Q. Q of what? Is that?
I don't know what page it is.
Restriction of government.
Yeah, section Q is restriction of the governing body.
Restrictions of governing body, okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Melton. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Can, can we just define exactly how that's going to read then? Are you just removing collectively and so it's going to read, the governing bodies shall not perform or individually?
Well, collectively, we have to get rid of the or as well.
So just say.
It would say shall not perform individually, that's, that's all it would say.
Hold on.
Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
You're good. You guys could take out collectively or individually, you could take out both of those and then it would just be the governing bodies shall not perform general executive management functions and so on and so forth.
All right, okay. I like that.
Isn't that, aren't we in the same place though? We're still limited, it doesn't change anything.
I mean, we're limited by the charter, but it's not as stringent as this, it's, it says, yeah, we have to do this, but it doesn't say we can't do it either, so. And our charter's very difficult to change, it needs to be updated, but.
I think I'm more uncomfortable with the idea that if, if we say individually, then the assumption is that collectively we can perform general administrative management functions and I just don't see us being able to do that.
Then why don't we add a clause, you know, if there is a shortage of senior level staff? Something in that case.
I think our city's in trouble if we're that big of a shortage, but.
Been there before, but, so.
Is that kind of what you're going at?
That's, you know, like I say, I just think it ties the commission's hands in certain cases, so, you know, we all know that, that we're not going to come in here behind the scenes and, and try to run the city behind the scenes, we can't do that, but I just think in certain cases.
It's back to that same argument though, we're not, but what if a, a future commission tries to.
A future commission or a future city manager.
Especially if they don't understand what their role is.
Yep, so.
Then we're back to the same.
Like I say, at least this document can be changed in 30 days, like in the charter, it has to go to a vote of the people and it, it's very difficult to change, so.
Okay. Okay, sorry, we're back to the motion.
Just bringing it up, I'm just being.
What's your motion now, Josh?
My motion's still the same, I guess we'll move, we'll remove collectively or individually.
Okay, just say shall not perform general executive management functions?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is to approve item four.
Ordinance 1662.
Section Q, ordinance 1662, to state the governing bodies shall not perform general executive management functions, right?
Yes.
Et cetera, et cetera, okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. A second from Commissioner McDonald, and did you get all that, Rachel?
I, I'm trying, yes.
We're taking out collectively or individually, we're just taking, we're striking it completely.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Rogen?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. All righty. Does anybody have anything else?
A motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Ruden to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem Wright, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? We're adjourned.